Before winter break to every pre-K through six student. There will be a webpage that goes live that week before winter break as well. That describes the plan, the new plan with the FAQ. And then principals were given an overview at the principal meeting on Tuesday of last week. So unless anyone else has anything to fill in, that's it for the student assignment plan.
I think that's, I think that's very accurate. I think the one thing that came out of the Citizens Advisory Committee meeting is just the continuous communication of the fact that it really relates to transportation. And if you can take your child to the school that you're already attending, or any school that you choose that has availability, you'll still be able to do that. And so making sure that that doesn't get confused with the aspect of providing transportation. So I appreciated parents really saying, please make sure you communicate that. And so as we go forward, we'll continue to work on that communication. Next, we have the Legislative Committee, Mrs. Fay.
Sure. We met last week and we had, excuse me, we had two agenda items. We continue to monitor the unfolding, ever-changing state of the learning community and potential legislation there. Mr. Robbins has been meeting with other superintendents, and I know that they've been meeting with some of the state senators who are working on a plan. Senator Sullivan has proposed a plan. We're just making sure that we hear from everybody, including Lorraine Chang from the learning community, the senators, the other superintendents. Is there anybody else I've left out? Those are all of the stakeholders. So we're just really making sure that we know what's going on, but we, as a committee, aren't forwarding any recommendations at this point because there isn't a bill out there. But we'll just keep everybody apprised of that. And then we do have, in the action items, we do have a resolution that we'll be asking the board to take action on tonight regarding OSERS. And it's more or less affirming, I'll be 448, as it was bracketed last year, which is the bill that you all already approved, gave support to last year with a couple of additional clarifications. One being on exactly what our liability would be should the state take over the investment authority for OSERS. And the other one being a limitation on the ability of the OSERS trustees to initiate litigation against the Board of Education. So we just wanted to make sure that, as a committee when we met, that as some of those concerns arose, that they were addressed in the resolution. So we do have that for you as an action item.
Thank you. Were there any construction manager at risk items? Okay. The Specialty Schools Review and Recommendations Committee will meet, looks like tomorrow. Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, Mr. Scanlon, has that met?
We'll meet on Wednesday. And we're starting to, as you can see from some of the stuff on the consent agenda, the beverage magnet middle school renovation, Northwest High School renovation. We're getting into the larger projects, so we're kind of getting into the teeth of the bond issue. So I guess this, this winter and spring, we'll have some, some larger projects going out for bid. So that's something for board members and CBOC to pay attention to.
And that's probably a good point to bring folks' attention to item K1, which is the Jacobs 2014 bond program update, which has a significant amount of information covered in CBOC, questions that have been asked and the responses. So if you're looking at that. And then the Code of Conduct Committee will also meet later this week. So we will have more committee updates when we get together in January. With that, we'll go to, let's go to J2B audits. As I know, we have our external auditors here to present, so we'll let them come forward.
I'm the Accounting Manager for the Omaha District, and I'm here to ask the board to accept the 2014-15 audit performed by Simon Johnson. This is the eighth year they've been auditing the district. They're under contract to audit for one more year, and then we'll be going out for an RFP to select a new auditing firm at that point in time. With that, I'd like to introduce Darren Osten. He's the partner in charge of the audit, and Justin Hope, who is the auditor manager in charge.
All right. Thank you. Well, it looks like our PowerPoint file didn't get loaded on here, so I'll scroll through the handout that you guys should have gotten. It's just a PDF file. I'll get, I should be able to get through it. But yes, as Mike said, this is our eighth year. I certainly want to thank you, board members, for the continued opportunity to provide audit services to you. Particularly, I want to thank the staff. The audit process and the process we go through to conduct our audit is certainly a large undertaking to get through this process at the end of the year. And I know you're going through the, the staff is going through the process to put together the financial report for us to audit. And I know it's a very large undertaking. There are a lot of departments involved, a lot of individuals that we inquire of throughout our audit process. And it takes away from their daily workload as well and adds additional responsibility to them. So certainly appreciate all their help. This year was a, there's a pretty significant change in your financial statements due to the implementation of GASB Statement 68. Last year, we had the implementation of GASB Statement 67, which was the new reporting model for pension plans themselves. This year, GASB 68 was the new reporting model for employers of pension plans, where the district had to recognize its share of the net pension liability of OSERS as the employer. And so we'll talk about that through the presentation and what impact that had. It had a significant impact on your net position. So let's, this is going to be interesting. Let's just skip ahead to, I'm going to do the audit presentation, and then Justin is going to go through, we put together some graphical presentation for you, some historical comparisons, just to kind of share with you the last five years. Our deliverables included in this large book includes the reports to the board, which contains our required communications, and then internal control-related matters, and then the audit reports. And there's four different audit reports. The school OPS audit report, ESU 19, the retirement system itself has a separate audit conducted, and then the KIOS, the KIOS radio station also has an audit requirement because of the grant funding that they get from the Corporation of Public Broadcasting. So the audits were submitted to Nebraska Department of Education and the Audit of Public Accounts. So the statutory requirement is to have them submitted by November 5th. Your fiscal year end is August 31st, so that's two months and five days to get the audit done. And all other school districts in the state, we've had this discussion in the past, present on a cash basis. You guys present on a full accrual basis. It takes a considerably much longer time to get that done. But we were able to get the OSERS, the ESU, and the KIOS reports submitted by that November 5th date. We did send a note into NDE that we needed a few extra days to get the OPS report done for a couple of different reasons. We let management keep the books open for a little bit longer as they were trying to get everything wrapped up. And then we had the implementation of GASB Statement 68, which had significant changes in the disclosures and the financial statement presentation themselves. But they were submitted on the 10th, which was, has been the earliest we've ever gotten them in, in the eight years since we've been doing the audit. So the process went very, very smoothly. We still had to do the submission to the Federal Audit Clearinghouse for the OPS report because you have federal awards, and so you have an audit conducted in accordance with OMB Circular A133. The Federal Audit Clearinghouse website has been down for probably about six months. It just went back online this month. We had until January 31st to get that in. They had a data breach, and so they shut down all submissions basically since April. So we'll get that in and get that process going here in the next week or so, try to get that done before the holidays. And then the Corporation of Public Broadcasting has an audit submission or a certification that we have to do for the KIOS FM radio station as well, and we'll be getting that done here shortly. So let's move into our required communications. Our audits are conducted in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards, and then, as I said, with the federal awards that you expend, OMB Circular A133, which is now moving to the Uniform Guidance for next year. Our responsibility is to plan and perform the audit to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement, and our auditor's report did include an unmodified or a clean opinion. As I stated, we're disclose any significant changes in, or adoption of new accounting policies or changes in practices. And the main thing that affected your financials this year was the GASB Statement Number 68. You had, and you saw that actuary report, there is a unfunded liability. For purposes of audit, you just had your actuary report as of September 1/15. Purposes of audit is based on the September 1/14 report, which was August 31st, 2014 measurement date. And GASB 68 allows one year in arrears for the process for timing purposes. Because the actuary report just got done recently, we had to have the audit report done. So it goes back in the arrears. So your total net pension liability is $432 million. Well, since the state also has a contribution requirement, they pick up their proportionate share of the liability. So the share of the district's net pension liability was $359 million that was recognized in your statement and net position, and certainly had an impact on your net position. And we'll show that in one of the graphic presentations, so you'll be able to see that. We did have to do a restatement of the beginning net position of, to recognize the beginning of the year net pension liability. There were five pages of disclosures added to the report for GASB Statement 68, and then a couple new required supplementary information schedules regarding the changes in the net pension liability and scheduled contributions that were required to be included. And then also in our communications is management's judgments and estimates. This is where management can influence the results of the financial statements, so we spent some time looking at the estimation processes, and all the processes were reasonable and consistent with prior years. The next piece is audit adjustments. We did have 11 total audit adjustments related to all opinion units, and some of the adjustments did hit some of the separate reports that were issued, but there were collectively 11 total, including four provided by management. A couple of those were really just reclassifications and didn't have any change on the overall net position. And then three of those adjustments were related to the GASB Statement 68, changes that needed to be made. So really, other than, other than the GASB Statement 68, there were a couple entries related to Educare. There were just three entries that we had to make that changed the net position related to the district's financial statements. So overall, the audit process went very smooth. Management did a good job of getting prepared for it, and we just had a few adjustments other than the GASB 68 implementation that we helped them with. And then there were a few reclassification entries, and we did have five past adjustments that we deemed were overall immaterial to the financial statements. The rest of our required communications, management didn't try to influence the audit process. They're always very receptive to suggestions that we make. We helped them through the GASB 68 implementation, provided them with, with kind of the general entries, and then they had to go through and allocate those to the different opinion units that needed to be, needed to be made to get their proportionate share of, from where the future contributions are going to come from. No difficulties. We provide management with a representation letter, and then our quality review was also included. That's our internal, we have to get an external review of our processes every three years, and our report is included in our report to the board. Internal control-related matters, so there are three levels of internal control-related matters. There's a material weakness, which could have a material effect on the financial statements. There's a significant deficiency, which is less in magnitude than a material weakness, but, but significant enough to bring to the attention of the report to the board. And then there's just control deficiencies, which are not required to be recorded, reported in accordance with government auditing standards. So we did not have any reportable matters, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. We also did not have any compliance findings reported in accordance with our OMB Circular A133. And I have another slide on that, as far as what programs we looked at. We did have one internal control-related matter that we included. This was related to bank reconciliations. So you have a number, you have a number of accounts that are maintained at the individual building level, and some of those are not being reconciled either on a regular or a timely basis, and therefore being reflected in the general ledger. And I know you have separate sets of controls overseeing those buildings, building accounting functions, et cetera. So our recommendation is just to review and enhance those controls and make sure that they're functioning appropriately and how they should be. I mean, the overall differences in what we noted, it was immaterial to your financial statements, but we just want to make sure, she always dealing with cash, you want to make sure that cash is properly accounted for. It's because the risk of fraud with, with cash is always greater than with maybe other, other financial saving line items. And we are aware that you did recently just hire a new internal audit position that I know is going to, part of that person's focus is going to be monitoring the controls at the individual building level, so hopefully that will help, help with, facilitate that process. And then we have some management advice points. The Uniform Grant Guidance is in effect this year. That will affect the audit requirements for next year, although it won't have too much of a significant impact on your audit requirement because it, it just changed kind of the minimum thresholds. But there are some, some requirements, changes in some of the guidance related to federal awards for allowable costs, time and entry, or time and effort reporting, excuse me, and then indirect costs reporting. And you guys get a lot of guidance from Department of Education. They put, they put a lot of the information out on their finance website and communicate it to all the districts throughout the state. So I know a lot of that has been put in place already this year through guidance from them, and they've had many sessions on that with the school districts as far as what the changes were going to be. So I think you're in pretty good shape as far as that implementation. And then just some new accounting and financial reporting standards that are coming out are included in, in the report to the board as well. So we'll move on to just an overview of the audited financial statements. As I said, our independent auditor's report had an unmodified opinion in that the financial statements were presented fairly and in accordance with GAAP. Also included in our audit report, we do discuss, there's some paragraphs in there regarding the required supplementary information and the procedures that we performed related to that. And then the schedule of reference to the government auditing standards report and the reports in accordance with OMB Circular A133 related to the scheduled federal awards. The next section of your audit report is the management's discussion and analysis, and this is required supplementary information by the GASB. And it's basically management's introductory, introduction to the financial statements, to the readers of the financial statements. Then we get into the financial statements themselves. You have your government-wide financial statements, which shows your governmental activities and your business-type activities. Those are reported on your full accrual method of accounting. It shows your net position and then the activities during the year. And then you have the separate fund financial statements for the different funds. You have the governmental funds, the proprietary funds, and the fiduciary funds. The fiduciary funds is primarily where the retirement system is at. The governmental funds are actually on current resources method, or the modified accrual method, and then they flow into the full accrual method. And then all the various notes of the financial statements, and I just listed some of the significant ones there. The first two, 1A, and then 1B through D, just kind of talks about the different entities in your financial statements, as well as the different, explains the differences in the fund financials to the government wides and the measurement focus and basis of accounting. And then there are footnotes in there about your capital assets, your bond requirements, including the new bond issue that you had during this past year. There's a note on the various fund balances and the restrictions on certain fund balances, and then your, your general fund balance percentage. Then the pension, the pension note is the large note with the GASB 68 implementation, as well as Note 13, which disclosed the change in accounting principle and how we restated the beginning net position in your financial statements. And then we just go forward with the, the rest of the schedules, a number of schedules, budgetary comparison schedules and pension-related schedules that are required supplementary information. And then Nebraska Department of Education requires you to actually have a budgetary comparison schedule for every fund in your financial statements. So there are some other schedules in there as well. And then the schedule of the federal awards and the reporting required by government auditing standards in OMB Circular A133. So just overview of that process, you had just about $81 million in federal awards expended this year. And so there was a separate report on compliance with program requirements and internal control compliance over the major programs. The major programs we tested were Title I, Title II, and then the Medicaid MAPS program. And our audit covered approximately 37% of those federal awards. We're required to do at least, as a low-risk auditee, we're required to do at least 25% as our threshold, but we have to go through a risk-based process as to how we get there so we make sure we're not doing the same, same programs every year. So that is the, kind of the summary of the audit process. I just put a little slide in here to kind of talk about the OSERS and the net pension liability, including your financial statements. So some of the pension, pension-related information that was included in the disclosure were some of the key assumptions. And as you're, in your previous presentation about the actuary report, you had the 8% expected rate of return is their estimated amount, and they showed that the actual returns and the smoothing returns were different from, from what the projected rate of returns were. And then you have, they include in the reports the 4% salary increase and the 3% inflation increase. As you said, you're about, you were about 75% funded the year before as of the August 31st measurement date, and the net pension liability was $431.9 million. Your proportionate share of that was 83.2%, and that is based on the total contribution amount. So you're at 101% of what the, what the employee contributions are, and then the state is two, so I think your total is right at about 12. And so you're at like 9.8, and then the state's was two. So it's based on that percentage is how the percentage of the pension liability was calculated. And then, then we just did a little historical funding for you. So in the required supplementary information, we had to include 10-year schedules. So you can see the employer required contribution rates in the first year of that schedule was 6.3%, and now you're at 9.9%. And then your contributions in 2015 was 33.1 million compared to 24.1 million in 2006. And then what's also required in the disclosure is a sensitivity analysis. So this is looking at if there was a 1% decrease or a 1% increase in investment earnings and what the impact would be on that net pension liability. So if they would have used a 9% return as opposed to the 8, the liability would have only been 257 million, but if it would have been 7% instead of 8, it would have been a $641 million liability. So it just kind of shows you the impact of what the, the, some of the assumptions used in the actuary, actuary reports and what that impact has on that calculated net pension liability. So I'll let Justin go into the graphic presentation, and then we'll open it up for questions after that.
Great. Our first slide here shows the average daily membership. This is calculated by Scott in his office. He was presenting earlier. We work with him to kind of get an understanding of how that process works and take a look at how they gather that information. And the information for this slide and the next slide actually is available on the Department of Ed's website. You can go look up any of the districts and find this information. But it shows, you know, steady growth. There's a dip in 2012, but steady growth in your membership, growth in the number of students you're serving. This slide here shows a per pupil cost based on average daily membership. And this comes as a function of the annual financial report that gets filed with the Nebraska Department of Ed. And you can see kind of a steady growth in the district's cost. Second from the right, this is the statewide average in 2014, which is the most recently available information. And then out on the far right is the 2014 learning community average. So you can see right in there with your 2014 column as compared to the learning community right in there with them. Typically, the reason the statewide average is a little higher, the rural districts have higher per pupil costs, based on just a function of smaller people counts. So that's kind of what drives that number being larger. The next slide, Darren kind of talked about a little bit. This is what the effect of GASB 68 did to your net position. Net position, if you want to think of it as kind of like your tangible net worth, if you settled everything up, what's left? In 2015, that number went negative as a result of that big pension liability coming on to the books. We knew that's what it was going to look like. I think, hopefully, we've been preparing the board for that's what it's going to look like. If you backed out GASB 68, you'd have about 332 million of a positive tangible net worth. Governmental fund revenue is the next slide. This is sort of the ongoing operations of the district, what this shows, things like the bond fund, capital projects fund, your general fund, your grant funds. And you see a little bit of up and down, but relatively consistent overall. The backside of this then is governmental fund expenditures. Some growth in that this year, I believe as a part of a plan to spend down and the way the budget was drafted. Bonded debt, you can see about $365 million of bonded debt at the end of fiscal 2015, which is an increase as a result of the $141 million bond issue passed in November 2014. General fund revenue, general fund houses your sort of primary education expenses, if you will, the ongoing cost of educating students. And the general fund expenditures on the other side of that relatively level, there's steady trending with that. And you see your general fund balance, the decrease here is not a result of GASB 68, but rather just kind of a planned spend down of fund balance. Policy is to keep 10 to 15% in reserve. And so as the fund balance had been growing the last few years, then a kind of plan to spend that down according to the budget in fiscal 2015. Last slide here shows the federal awards that the district receives. You see the big decrease from 2011 to '12. That's the runout of the Recovery Act money in 2011. 2012, that funding hasn't been there, although the district's funding sources have been relatively consistent from those federal sources after that. And that is all of the front little charts we have, but if you have any questions, we'd be certainly very happy to entertain those.
Mr. Wayne, did you have a question? No? Oh, okay, okay. I thought you were ready to go.
Yeah, I was all ready to jump into that whole presentation. You did a much better job.
Thank you.
So any other questions from any board members? Okay. Thank you so much for providing the information. Thank you so much for providing the information to us.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay, we'll go back to J2A grant fund budget adjustment. Oh, wait, we need to, sorry. Is there a motion to receive the annual reports and the recommended motion? Is there? Does someone want to make that motion?
I move to, let's see, the acceptance of the 2014-15 annual audit reports of the Omaha Public School District, ESU number 19, KIOS FM radio station in Omaha, school employees' retirement system.
Motion by Mrs. Fay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Williams. Some motion for acceptance of the 2014-15 annual audits reports of the Omaha Public School District, ESU number 19, KIOS FM radio station in Omaha, school employees' retirement system. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
America. Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Godding.
Aye.
Seven aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now, we will move on to J2A grant fund budget adjustments. Mr. Wayne had a couple of questions, so if you want to go through that.
Move for approval.
Okay. Some motion to approve the grants that are presented in front of us. Is there a second?
Second.
Some motion by Mr. Wayne, second by Ms. Williams, to approve the grant fund budget adjustments before us. Is there any discussion? Mr. Wayne.
I originally asked this to be pulled off because, one, I'm a fan of Spalding. Phoenix Academy uses quite a bit of it, and I have kids in my youth organization who have went through there. It's a larger conversation, so I guess, there's no questions about this. I have no more issues. They, Matt Ray sent out an answer to my question like before the meeting, but I didn't get the chance to read it until, just right before the meeting. With that being said, I think I would like to see a larger conversation of what all pilot programs we have going on around our district. I guess as for the committee, the, because this is also a pilot program, but I know like Central Park used to use Phonics and Spalding, and a couple of other schools did, and so, I just kind of want to get a picture of where these additional resources are being used and if we're seeing gains, if we're not seeing gains. But as far as this particular one, I understand what's going on with it now as far as it's a pilot program at King, and I'm all for it. I just think there needs to be a bigger conversation later down the road.
Okay. So, noted, and Mr. Ray will get that on the calendar. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Godding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Aye. I think she said.
Yes. Eight aye.
Motion carries. Okay. With that, we will move on to J2C Legislative Resolution Related to Omaha Schools' Employees' Retirement System. Mrs. Fay essentially walked through that, so is there a motion, and then, we can have
I move to approve the resolution as presented in the rationale.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Some motion by Mrs. Fay, second by Ms. America, to approve the resolution as presented in the rationale. Okay, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Godding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Ada.
Motion carries. Okay, with that, I just want to point out that before we go to closed session here, Mr. Ray put the Series 1000 Community Relations Policies in front of you, and I think with that, there's only one large grouping of policies left to go, I believe. Is that right, Mr. Ray?
Yes, the 5000 series.
5000 series. So, with that, we will then have been through all of the policies over the course of the last year and a half or so, which I think is a pretty big undertaking. So, Ms. Williams.
I move to approve the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, Dr. Turnquist, Mark Warnicki, and Legal Counsel, Personnel, Negotiations, Real Estate, Litigation, and Legal Advice.
Is there a second?
Second.
Some motion by Ms. Williams, second by Mrs. Underwood. Roll call, please.
Hi.
Did we vote on everything on the agenda? Because I think there was some confusion on the grants that got moved. I just want to make sure that we voted on everything. Did that say any?
Yes.
We did.
We're good. Yeah, she just stopped me. I'm just trying to help out.
Wayne. Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Godding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Nine aye.
Motion carries. Let me remind the Board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, Dr. Turnquist, Mark Warnicki, and Legal Counsel, Personnel, Negotiations, Real Estate, Litigation, and Legal Advice. Let the record reflect that the Board went into closed session at 10:10 PM.